Good evening. It is Wednesday, January 19th, 2020. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. And I am calling this meeting of the Policy Committee to order at, oh goodness, 6:06 PM. I don't like it when the two clocks don't match. It drives me crazy. Okay, 6:06 PM. I'll call the roll. Ms. Raymond is here. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Parker? Yep, okay. It says Dr. McKinney and Mr. Donovan. That's silly. We also have Diane Carey?
Here.
And, oh my goodness.
Greg Rodriguez.
Greg Rodriguez, thank you. Sorry, Greg.
Okay.
I'm having difficulty with spelling too tonight. It's not just you, it's everyone's names that I can't spell today. Okay. So, the first policy meeting of the year is always fun because it is set up by the previous chair and the administration. And I don't know a whole lot before we come in. So, this will be fun for everybody tonight. So, I have both Mr. Parker and Ms. Carey and Mr. Rodriguez here to talk about the various policies. How was this going last year? Mr. Parker, did you like to go over your memo to us? Or did you want me just to go and read the agenda? And then have you or Ms. Carey or Mr. Rodriguez speak to each one as we go?
Well, usually I would give an overview after Ms. Bishop. You know, I would summarize the memo and explain if somebody else was with me what their role was. And so...
Okay. Would you like to continue to do that this year?
Sure.
All right. Then I will give you the floor. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have to say this was the easiest personally for me because we have Diane Carey in HR and Greg Rodriguez in Technology. And they will be discussing policies. We have three policies here in total. Title IX, which she will explain through a total overhaul and mandatory. And then she created the mandatory code of conduct reporting, which we do not have, but strongly recommends that we need it. That we need it. And Greg would speak to his proposed policy around the Chromebooks, since he worked on the details of that. So...
Okay. Well, then let's discuss proposed policy ACAC, Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy and Grievance Process. It's very long. I read it. And it has a lot of information in it.
It's 16 pages. And this policy, Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy and Grievance Process, replaces the current sexual discrimination, sexual harassment, and sexual violence policy for students. So, it's far more robust. It defines what sexual harassment is. And also, so the definition section is expanded. It also covers the informal versus a formal complaint, how to make a formal complaint, identifying the Title IX Coordinator's role in investigating timely complaints and timely investigating the complaints. And also talks about the grievance process, which is if someone is filing a formal complaint, what that process is. It identifies timelines. And then it covers the appeals process. So, it really is a much more robust policy than what we had. And in writing this policy, the policy also references another policy, mandatory code of conduct reporting for all employees. And that one ties into the code of conduct for New Hampshire educators. We didn't have one. So, that's what prompted me to also put that policy together as well, using the NHSBA's template, which has been vetted by their attorneys. And so, those are the two policies for review.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding this very lengthy policy and the policies that it seeks to replace?
Could you just go over the biggest differences between what we had? I know you said that there's more in here than there was, but like, any specific things?
Yes, quite a bit. Quite a bit, actually. It defines sexual harassment in more detail. It also includes, it has a broader definition section. It, for example, sexual harassment is prohibited under Title IX. And by this policy, conduct on the basis of sex, including without limitation gender, sexual orientation, and gender identity occurring in the school education system program or activity that satisfies one or more of the following. So, again, it's expanding each of those sections and identifying the role of the Title IX Coordinator in more detail. It's far more expansive. It also has a training component, what the training should look like, what it should include. You know, and both of them do talk about retaliation being prohibited. However, this also talks about if there's a conflict of interest, how do you take care of that? It talks about dissemination of notice. It talks about records and record keeping. So, things that wouldn't have necessarily been in the policy before, in addition to, as I mentioned, identifying what a formal complaint is, an informal complaint, the filing of a formal complaint. And then the grievance process is explained in detail. And also...
It deals not just with students.
Pardon me?
It also deals with adults.
Yes, also does cover, you know, non-students as well and third party. But we are still at this time keeping our harassment, the other harassment policy that we have for non-students at this time. Again, so just copies, it talks about remedies, what the discipline could look like, the timeframe for the grievance process, that's a new section. And talks about the investigation, what the investigation would look like. Talks about the initial determination and the decision maker. So, again, it has quite a bit more than the other policy had. And it's compliant with the law. Any other questions?
Did you have a question, Ms. Johnson? Okay. So, I have a couple of questions. I'm curious about whether or not we still are going to keep the policy regarding who the Title IX Coordinators are throughout the district? Because there's a different person that you would bring your complaint to based on where you are in the district, which school, et cetera. Or if we are going to tie that into here as like a, you know, a conjoined policy like...
We do have to communicate who the Title IX Coordinators are. So, we will have to look at that, who the Coordinator is. And then there might be, which is in most cases, myself and the school principals.
Right. So, I was just looking to see what the...
So, right now, I think we're keeping that policy. We took the names off because, individual names, but the role of the principal.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, because that won't change. You know, the principal, whoever it is, would be for that building, the coordinator.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking for, and I couldn't find it. And then my other question was regarding GBAA. So, this is going to replace JBAA, which is the current policy for students. And I like this one a lot better. And if it's required, it's required. That's it. But then, I guess my question is, will we need an update for GBAA, which is the Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy for staff?
Yes.
Where we would need to identify a new investigation and grievance process?
Well, that one, yes, I'm in the process of working on that.
Okay.
That'll be for another meeting. Okay, yeah.
All right. I just wanted to make sure because it seemed to me, as I was reading this, I was like, ooh, these are good ideas.
Yeah.
We should see if we need to do this for staff. Would that similarly be a legally required update? Or just some...
I have to take a look, I want to look at ours because that's covered under Title VII, the harassments. So, I want to take a look at that as well.
Okay. I don't know what Title VII is.
But I'll have that for you separately.
I've never heard of Title VII. Do you know, anyone? No? What's Title VII?
That's discrimination against sex, race, gender, yeah.
Okay.
National origin, yeah.
For not students. Okay. Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Is there anywhere in here, I scanned through quickly, but is there anything about if a student is a victim of sexual harassment, if the parents need to be involved?
Oh, the parents need to be involved, absolutely. That's all covered in the policy.
Okay.
Yes.
It's clearly laid out.
Yep.
Okay. So...
And just so, I mean, we are doing that now in the event that we do receive a complaint. We do, there's a whole process that we're following now. So, this just memorializes it in writing.
Is there a way for the student to choose to opt out of having their parents involved if they have a contentious home life?
We do, no.
Not officially, no. So, the legal guardian, I mean, we'd work that out on the building level.
Okay.
Okay. But the presumption is you're a minor child, parents are notified. Okay? Or DCYF if that's the situation. You know, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we're legally obligated to follow, you know, the policy and, you know, and protocols.
Oh, Mike? The mic didn't pick up any of what you just said.
I said, "We're legally obligated to follow certain protocols." And it's all outlined in the policy.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, well, I guess I'll just wait until we get to that one. So, at this point, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm looking for a motion to approve policy ACAC, Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy and Grievance Process, and send it to the full board.
So moved.
Okay. Do we, Ms. Darling, do you want to second it?
Seconded.
Okay. All right. On the motion to send it to the full board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, we will send that to the full board. So, that brings us to rescinding our current policy because we don't want to have two policies on the book that say, well, that cover the same topic. So, I'm looking for a motion to recommend to the full board that we rescind policy JBAA.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Thank you for bearing with my note-taking. I hope that Ms. Kinsella can read my handwriting later. All in favor of recommending that we rescind policy JBAA? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unopposed? Okay, great. So, then we come to the mandatory code of conduct reporting for all employees. And I have to let you know that I'm confused by this, not confused, I'm, yeah, I'll say confused. Because when I think of mandatory reporting, I think of mandatory reporting to like DCYF that, you know, and we would do that if a child has been inappropriate, had inappropriate, had an employee inappropriately have contact with them. And then DCYF would do what they do with that, and so would the police and whatnot. But is this talking about that? Because we have kind of a policy for everyone in the state is a mandated reporter. Or is this something else entirely or in addition to?
This is in addition to, this is a policy that is referenced in the new Title IX policy. It's a policy that we did not have. And it pretty much ties into the code of conduct and code of ethics that we have. But it's a policy that we should have that talks about the recording, reporting requirements if there are code of conduct violations. And it identifies that in number one and two under the general section. And then it talks about reports by covered individuals. If they suspect misconduct of the code of conduct, then they're to report to the building principal or the superintendent. So, this was just a policy that we should have on the books. And I took this from the NHSBA as well and made a couple of minor tweaks for us.
Okay. All right. And is this in conjunction with the change to the code of conduct up at the State House? Or is this just something that we should have had all along?
B, we should have had this already.
Well, it's funny because I was on, I was a policy chair four years ago. And I had, we had this whole plan as we were going through, like, these are so old, we have to update them. And then we're still working on it. But yeah, we're still working on it. We're muddling our way through. Any questions about the mandatory code of conduct reporting? Sorry, I said it wrong. Mandatory code of conduct reporting. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So, where you're talking about credentials, that would be somebody like a teacher or anybody that had...
Correct.
Was inappropriate, then it would go up there and they could lose their license.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. It's just, I don't want anybody to think I'm picking on teachers. It's just that when you say credentials, that that usually goes with, and even a superintendent or anybody that has to go through all the testing and get licensed.
Yes, and if they fail to notify, you know, the mandatory reporting of the violation. And then also, it talks about self-reports as well. So, yeah, and it ties in, like I said, it ties into the code of conduct policy for the state.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Sure. Ms. Darling?
I see here that it says that if the superintendent is the subject of report, then the principal's report shall be made in the same manner as described in B2. But what I'm seeing for B2 is that, just that it's supposed to be done in writing. Where would a principal report if they felt that the superintendent had violated?
Okay. If you look at, one, the second paragraph, if the person who is subject to the alleged misconduct violation is the superintendent, then the covered individual shall report the suspected violation to the chief operating officer.
So, it would be, instead of B2, it would be paragraph two of B1.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
And I have to say, I appreciate that this is laid out so that it can be handled and investigated prior to board involvement, so that there's a grievance process. Because people tend to want to call the board when they have complaints about anyone in central office. So, it's nice to have it laid out exactly who to go to. So... Okay, I did have one more question, and I have just lost it. Oh, I know my question. This, I guess my question on this is, did these reports happen at the time of the suspected misconduct up to the state, and then the state does its investigation? Or is it such where the district does their investigation and then, you know, once they've determined some sort of a, like, I guess my question is, what's the grievance process? So, if someone, you know what I mean, is reported to have engaged in, you know, some sort of conduct violation, if it's a Title IX conduct violation, there's a very clear grievance process.
Correct.
If it's any of the other types of conduct violation that are listed in the code of conduct book, is there a grievance process for those?
Well, I think it would be, it would be handled like any other investigation. We would have to meet with the parties, get the information, and pretty much conduct it the way we would any other investigation.
Okay. And then would the Board of Ed, would the Department of Ed at the state be allowing you to conduct your investigation and then taking into consideration your findings? Or would they be conducting their own contemporaneous investigation?
I think it would depend on what the situation is.
Okay. I just, I don't want to put our teachers' credentials potentially at risk. I mean, I'll pass this, but I'll vote for it. But my concern is having our teachers' credentials be put at risk on the base of an allegation that hasn't been investigated and that might not have a grievance process.
We would investigate anything, even right now, without, I mean, the grievance process for Title IX is new for that policy. But certainly, if we have a complaint, we have to investigate it because of that. You know, you have someone's reputation and credentials on the line, so we would conduct an investigation. We wouldn't simply say, oh, well, you know, we got this allegation, you know, we're gonna, we'd have to look into it, like we would any time we get any kind of a complaint.
Right. I'm not worried about our district looking into it. I guess I'm worried about things outside of our control at the state level. So...
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? No? All right, then. I'm looking for a motion to approve proposed policy GBEAB, mandatory code of conduct reporting, and send it to the full board.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Because they're like a well-oiled machine. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, great. And so, next is the Student Parent Guardian Chromebook Agreement. Ms. Johnson, I'm sure you have plenty to say about this, but...
I'm thrilled about it. It's, it's right on target, but I'll let Mr. Rodriguez discuss it.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, everybody. So, we've adapted a policy from South Hadley that Ms. Johnson provided for us to really apply it for this district. This has gone through many eyes over the past few months because the original thought was to, with Mr. Parker, Mr. Burns, and Mr. Rodriguez from respective high schools, is to do a pilot one-to-one program. It's since evolved into more, possibly more, you know, within the future. So, we're looking to expand it, expand it to the entire district. So, but with that said, the goal is to have a Student Parent Guardian Chromebook Agreement and charge the students a $25 fee to lease or take a Chromebook for the remainder of the school year and have this apply for the upcoming years. So, this fee would be $25 to take a Chromebook. And this hopefully would subsidize any damages or losses that we may experience throughout the school year. So, it's kind of a pay-to-play type of thing. So, you get a Chromebook if you pay the $25 fee, so...
Okay. I have lots of questions. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. How many students are we figuring would probably take the Chromebook and would pay for this?
Well, we, with the original numbers that we did for the high schools, it was around 1,300. But that was, that was with the idea of just the Chromebooks, and that was just handing them out. So, this didn't include the fee. I'm guessing those numbers will be lower just because we are charging something for it. So, for the district, last year, I believe we, and I know I'm on record saying this in there, but it was right around 8,000. It's been a little bit since I've looked at the last numbers. So, but we had an 85% return from last school year. So, that's without a fee, and that's including damages and loss, so...
How did you come up with the $25? Did you figure that that might be the most affordable for everybody?
It was the most affordable. We were looking at a tiered system based on free and reduced lunch. But it ranged from a low amount to a higher amount. And we, Mr. Parker, and the two high school principals, we thought just a flat fee of $25 would be best to charge a student for the Chromebooks.
I think this policy, and I thank you, I thank everybody who worked on this, I kind of pushed it long enough from when the Chromebooks were handed out and some of the problems we had when they were coming back. I think this kind of gives everybody the responsibility, and everybody understands that, you know, it's not your property, it's property of the Nashua School District. And that we have to take ownership and, you know, treat it like, you know, it belongs to somebody else. And I could tell, you know, a lot of work went into this, you know? It's not easy piecing together somebody else's policy. But I thank you. I thank you all for all the hard work that you did on this. And I know that I really, you know, hammered it in. But still, you know, when we gave a lot out and we had a lot, quite a few that came back broken and dismembered, dismembered, you know, and other problems with it. I mean, we as taxpayers have to replace it. And I'm sure we have better things to do with the money than to keep replacing and fixing. And hopefully, this, you know, parents will, you know, take some responsibility with this, students. And I know there's a lot of parents that do. But thank you again.
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Darling?
I have two questions. The first is, do we have any system put in a place where if the student cannot afford the $25 per year? And the second issue, not issue, the second question I have is, it says that students are responsible for the full cost of the Chromebook. I think my concern with that is if you have parents that say can't afford the full cost of the Chromebook, it's not punishing the student, it's punishing the parent. Is, I would hope that we could have like a discussion to see if there's another way that we can handle it without, without maybe putting families in a position that they're not financially able to afford.
So, with, this is, this is why the fee, it is what it is. It is on the lower side because other surrounding districts charge double, even quadruple what we charge for a technology fee to pretty much lease these same Chromebooks. So, we tried to make it more fair for this district, considering the, you know, the income and socioeconomic needs of the district. So, just this week alone, we had two intentional damages of district devices that we did, that they were, the students were charged. So, like Ms. Johnson was saying, that there is an ownership that's involved with this policy. So, if they do pay a fee, they are responsible for it. So, and this is, it's also to subsidize, like, the students who, you know, responsible in return it, but also for the repairs and damages that will incur. Because we know they will incur. And for the past two school years, we've seen some pretty horrendous things that's happened to these, to these devices. Blowtorches taken to them, intentional breaking over the knees, just screens just split in half, just things like that. So, these are, these are what we're trying to avoid. So, we understand that there may be some families that do, that maybe they can't afford these, but it's, it's, the feeling is that most families should be able to afford this if they do need a Chromebook.
And if there's an exception, if there's an exception for some reason that emerges, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Right now, we wouldn't want to adapt that or put that, something like that in the policy because we have a practice now, if you need something that could hinder your education and the school can provide it, we work it out, case by case basis. All right? So, I understand the concern, but I'm not overly concerned with that just because of past practice, if something different needs to happen for a specific reason, we'll deal with it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and just add on to that. So, there are some, there are some instances where, you know, a single student would damage three and four Chromebooks beyond repair. So, this is what we're trying to avoid, especially with the policy that outlines something like this, that you are responsible for that. Because that's three and four Chromebooks, you're talking $750 to $1,000 just in damages alone with no repercussions. So, that's, and that goes to the cost of the taxpayers as well.
Not to, not to sound like I'm arguing the other side by any means, but should we put something in here that says, you know, if you have intentionally damaged, you know, one, you have to go find your own form of technology? Or two?
There is an intentional acts under losses that are not covered. So, that outlines the, the students are responsible for the full cost of the Chromebook. So, that's, and there is, if a student has a device on their own, they can bring it with on school grounds. We have, we have the capabilities. If they have their own laptops at home, by all means, bring it, bring it to campus. It's absolutely fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Were you able to read it there, under intentional acts, under reference to school discipline?
I had actually just missed the line of saying students losing their privilege of using school technology.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
This will go across all three levels, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is this for all students as part of, because when you start the, you have to sign that technology agreement every year. Is this in addition to that technology agreement that we're going to have all students sign at the beginning of the year irrespective of whether or not we're handing Chromebooks? Are we handing Chromebooks out to all students now at the beginning of the year? And what if parents say, "Oh, I don't want that responsibility. I just want my kid to use a district Chromebook from the Chromebook cart while they're in class, and then that's it."
Perfectly fine. They can still use a Chromebook in the Chromebook cart while they're in class. So this is, this is the ability to take home a Chromebook with them if they, if so needed.
Okay.
So, and the acceptable use policy is a separate policy that, that we adopted sometime last year.
Okay.
That was an updated policy.
And then we've changed our rules to allow students to bring their own devices to school to use. Are we, are we experiencing that now? Where students are bringing their own laptops or Chromebooks to school to use them instead of a school Chromebook?
I don't believe there was ever a, a policy that didn't allow students to bring their own devices. They're, they've always been allowed to bring, at least to my knowledge, that there's never been any restrictions on bringing like a laptop. Because we have a, we do have a guest network for students and, and staff to bring their own devices.
Right. I think maybe it just doesn't happen, or it's discouraged-
Probably just doesn't happen.
Because, you know, parents don't want their expensive devices to get broken.
Well, this, this is-
But it does happen now. Kids do bring their own devices.
Right. Well, I know a lot of kids are like doing stuff on their phones-
Right.
-a lot.
But to answer your question, the high schools will identify a process for kids if, you know, pay the $25, and then you get the Chromebook. So it's not just en masse, we're going to give them out. If you want one, we'll lay out the process for you. You pay your $25, you get, you get the Chromebook.
Okay. So the idea is to begin with the high schools and middle schools?
I think it's going to go all levels at the same time. That's, yeah.
And then how does this, if we were to, to advance this to the full board, which I hope we do, because I've agreed with Ms. Johnson since the beginning that we needed some sort of an agreement, like an insurance policy. How does this tie in with the plan we were talking about at curriculum yesterday for asynchronous learning? So yesterday, curriculum advanced to the full board, a plan for asynchronous learning for days when there were a certain threshold of staff absences making it unsafe to be at school. And then the idea being that students could log on from home. But I also like the idea of students being able to log on here, even if there's a fewer number and they're still stuck in a cafeteria or whatever, being able to log on and do some work. But that's just my own feelings. So we've advanced this policy to the full board, and if it gets passed, or we will allow students to, require, it sounds like, students at the high schools and middle schools mostly, but even some of the elementary schools, to log on and do some work in Google Classroom to count for school days. How does this fit in with that? Like, how are we going to roll out borrowing a Chromebook in a way that it is timely and helpful to families who might not have a device at home?
I think this is perfect timing with, because we, we started this process, I believe, the end of September, right? Right, Anthony? Talking about this, and this is when Omicron wasn't a thing, and there wasn't a lot of staff absences. So originally it was supposed to be all of high school students who are going to do this. So I guess this is good timing that, you know, we're presenting this now, and the distribution process is going to be handled at the school level. And hopefully next week, because I'm going to finance and ops and talking to them about how we're going to be accepting payments. So it'll be recorded if a student or a family member were to pay the fee, which would give them the ability to get a Chromebook from this, from the school.
Okay. And then the other question that I had was, I just want to acknowledge that last year for families who were unable to get a Chromebook from the district for whatever reason, the United Way gave out like 700 Chromebooks and laptops that had been donated to them or refurbished and then donated to them. Has there been any discussion with our community partners like them for what Ms. Darling had brought up about families who can't afford the $25 to be able to access a Chromebook that way?
Those Chromebooks that were donated were donated by the Nashua School District. They were the end-of-life Chromebooks that we had. So they, they did not, they weren't able to get like a updated policy anymore. So the, the, there was an expectation that they weren't going to work on our, in our management console after a certain date.
Oh, okay.
So we, we donated, I think, a little over 1,000 Chromebooks to the United Way to distribute to, to the community.
Okay.
So we, we have a semi-large batch coming out this, this summer. So the plan again is to do another donation with the United Way to help the families in the, in the community.
Okay. So potentially the ones that were donated last year would not necessarily work on Google Classroom this year?
No, so I don't want, I just want to rewind a little bit. So they, they should, they should work. So they, they're regulated, it's just they don't work in our management console in terms of updating and stuff like that.
Oh, okay.
Because we manage all the Chromebooks within the district. So if, they, they tend to lose their license after a certain date, and-
Right. So it's like-
Right.
It's like my 11-year-old MacBook that-
Yep.
-can no longer get upgrades.
Yep. Great example. Yep.
That's it. It's on the last operating system that it will ever have.
That is, that is exactly it. Yep.
I understand that. But MacBooks are expensive, so we're just going to live with it until it dies. All right. Jamie's laughing at me. Any other questions or comments on the policy regarding the Chromebook agreement?
Quick question. I know that some school districts had to limit how many Chromebooks a family could get. I don't, I wasn't sure what Nashua's situation was. Are we hoping to be able to give one Chromebook per shot, like per student, or one per family?
So if, we, we do have a ample supply now. I will say that we do have plenty of Chromebooks within the district to, to give, if theoretically one per student, theoretically I save. I, I, I mean, if they need it, it's there, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's great. And I just thought of one more before we move on. I know people think I'm killing this. JICT? So it's an addendum to JIC or an entirely new policy? JIC being the Code of Conduct policy. Just an interesting letter system that I was curious about.
I believe this is a brand-new policy.
I, I believe it is too, yeah.
That's why it says proposed.
Right. I just was curious that, whether it was, you know, because frequently you'll have a policy that says, you know, ACA dash R, and it's ACA and then a form attached to ACA. So this is JICT, and I was just curious if it will be an addendum to JIC and included like in the handbooks or whatever. No one knows.
Not sure.
Okay. Okay. No, you're not picking up on the mic?
Title IX and the bullying policy will be in the student handbooks, and they will be, they will be updated.
Okay.
But there's no discussion of this being in the student handbook, but we can talk to the principals about that.
I'm just curious.
I think when we set up a payment gateway online for this, this, this policy will be on the page or a splash page on there. So it'll read, and they can electronically sign or whatever. So it's, there's still a little bit of legwork to do with this to, to make it a complete form, fill out a form online, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else? No? So I'm looking for a motion to approve JICT and send it to the full board.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor of doing so, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that one will go up. Any other business before this committee today? All right. So moving forward, I will sit down with Mr. Parker, and we will go over the previous policy chair's list, because I know she has one, and-
Evidence law.
Oh, I was going to say, and administration's list. And I know Mr. Parker and Ms. Carey and Mr. Rodriguez will have priorities, and we'll figure those out. And we'll be back next month with a new list of things. If at any point people have requests, just email me, and I will bring them to Mr. Parker. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Great. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. We are adjourned at 6:47. Well done, team.